Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Wareham, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular Board of Selectmen's meeting. May I have a roll call, please? You're muted. You're muted.
Four selectmen are present, one is absent, and there, that's it, that's it, that's all that's here.
Thank you. I'm going to skip the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session. We will be going into executive session, and we will be returning to this meeting at seven o'clock at this time, okay? And Mr. Minis is in the meet, is in the meeting. There are actually five selectmen present now.
Okay. He's not on my screen.
He's, he's in the waiting room, and it takes five minutes to bounce him over.
Okay. So I move that we go into executive session, I believe, for reason six.
Yes, it is. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, second.
To go into executive session for reason number six, I'm now going to poll the board. Mr. White, if you can let Mr. Minis in, that would be great. Thank you. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Slaven.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Tropiano.
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Minis?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much. We will be going, we will be recessing from this meeting and going into executive session, and gentlemen, you all have your instructions, right?
Yes, we do.
We will be leaving this meeting, we will be coming back to this link, Zoom meeting at seven PM this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready to go, Judy?
Yep.
We're going live now.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wareham Board of Selectmen meeting for February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We opened in regular session at six o'clock PM this evening, and then we moved into executive session. We are now resuming the meeting. And so I will have the clerk do a roll call, please.
All five selectmen, as well as the town administrator, present.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance, let's see. Mr. Titlebaum?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements, I will start with Mr. Minis. You're muted, sir.
I'm here, I was just doing something else.
Oh, sorry.
So announcements. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Slaven. You're muted, sir.
The only thing I really have is Sandy actually came back from South Coast Hospital Group a week ago, they had a hundred and twenty-plus people in the hospital for COVID. Today they have just under thirty, so it definitely has signs of rapidly improving, that's it.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. Mr. Tropiano?
I've got nothing.
Mr. Titlebaum?
A couple of different things. One is that we did record Tricia Wertz's presentation on Thursday before the WRA and WCTV is in the process of uploading the whole meeting to YouTube, so people can see. She was the person we engaged with, a former marketing professional who did all kinds of work with huge computer firms and everything else. She interviewed over sixty people, put a lot of time into this, and we're very appreciative for that. And so that's going to be up online soon. The second thing is that earlier today, I submitted a letter of resignation effective May third, two thousand twenty-two, for the remaining year of my term to the town clerk. I've had an interesting combination of professional opportunities and physical health challenges present themselves at the same time. And so I just don't see myself having the time in the next year to really devote to doing this job the right way. And so it's time for me to make way for someone else. I'd like to thank the selectmen I've worked with, I'd like to thank the town administrator, and most of all, I'd like to thank the town employees who, you know, in an era when government employees are always under suspicion and attack, show up, do their jobs every single day, and just try their damn best for the residents of this town. So thank you all very much, and thank you for the trust you put in me for the past ten years.
Thank you. There's no follow-up to that one. Town residents' comments. I see no one with their hand up. Okay. We will go on to board comments. We'll go back to Mr. Slaven again. You're muted, sir.
First, I'd like to thank Peter for his service. It's greatly appreciated. Okay. There's a bunch of things happening in town, there's a lot of things percolating, whatever way you want to call it. Vera Life and Mr. Warren's project down on Lower Main Street, there's some issues that we're working on to the point of hopefully maybe getting a light type of thing where it's controlled by, you know, pushing a button at the crosswalk, we have all the issues with traffic, et cetera, and some parking issues that we're working on, and also working with the hospital on that. Hopefully that will resolve itself over the next few months. Commuter rail, what we're working on also is going to affect how Wareham is considered by the MBTA as far as a community, instead of being an adjoining community. We will probably, if commuter rail comes through, will now become a commuter rail committee. And therefore, the new zoning bylaw that the MBTA has passed, requiring so many units being available by right within a half a mile of the station, which would be the K Flyer Station, is going to have interesting consequences for us, and we're going to have to see how that all works out for us. There's a lot of funding opportunities coming down, obviously the police station we're trying to build, there's opportunities there. We have to make a final decision and get ready to do something when the money's become available. Merchant's Way, the issues there, of course, with the crossing of the railroad tracks, and Mr. Buckland and I are trying to come up with some way of finding enough money to pay for an engineering study, which the MBTA rail requires before we can actually get that done for us. There's a thing called the Blue Technology Corridor, which is basically marine industry from Boston all the way down to Rhode Island, been working on that and trying to see if we get that resolved to help Wareham going down the line. Couple other things that are happening on Main Street is some of the properties on Main Street have recently been sold. The block buildings, hopefully the new owners come in, will make some changes and maybe make mixed use, put retail above, retail below, apartments above. For those who do business with the Eastern Bank, I was told unofficially that they're closing on May twentieth on Main Street. So you should be getting notices, they said, this week on that. That's a big change for Main Street as well. We also have the Deacon School issue that we're dealing with. The solar bylaws that are coming down the line are butting up against the state's push for solar, wind power, et cetera. These are all things we're going to have to figure out how it works out and how it work, how we get it done. None of these things are going to be easy, so people are going to have to be very understanding of the difficulties we're facing to make it work for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Minis? Board comments?
Let's see. Mr. Slaven just covered the planning board discussion related to the development along, I guess that's Main Street next to Bessie Park. Parking issues are discussed. Mitigation related to traffic and the crossing there. And those things look like they'll be resolved, and it's a very important thing. I was at that meeting and spoke, and I don't speak a lot of times, I let the, as the liaison to that board, I, you know, let the board run their business. I mean, they're a separate board and make their own decisions. And I speak as a resident when I do speak. Mrs. Whiteside was there also. And I think it's very important to all of us what's going on there, Wareham Center, and also things that are going on. And for onset also, and some of the changes happening there, and the Blake studies, and hopefully we can utilize those moving forward and make some improvements within those areas. And I'd like to thank Peter for his many years of service and his time. And I know he's been thinking about this for a while, and it's a personal decision, and I respect him for whatever he wants to do. Thank you, Peter. That's all.
Thanks, Mr. Minis. Mr. Titlebaum?
No, I think I said enough already.
Mr. Tropiano?
I'll say.
Thank you. I want to echo a little bit of what Mr. Titlebaum spoke about earlier. Ms. Wertz put together an extremely interesting proposal, and she called it step one in terms of the amount of information that she had gathered. So she said another maybe three or four weeks, there will be a second portion of her presentation about communication. An enormous amount of work, very interesting comments from many different segments of the, of the town, and very well done. We, we were very, very lucky to be able to have her volunteer her time. So that's wonderful. I also would like to thank Peter for the ten years of being somewhat of a pain to take care of from time to time. But, you know, you, you've made your personal decision, and I respect you for that, and thank you very much for everything that you have done, and you have done an enormous amount.
Thank you. The one promise I made when I first ran to a room of thirty or forty people was that I would manage to tick off every single one of them, and I think I accomplished my goal.
Yes, probably. Okay. I guess we go to appointments, reappointments and interviews, we have none. Although we do have several vacancies on boards, they have been advertised in the paper, and they are on the website. We had a resignation the other day from the chairman of the Planning Board, and that was a little unexpected, but we will be moving one of the members up, Miss Town Moderator, and I will be moving one of the members up to be a full member, with the associate member, to be a full member on Thursday, so they will have a full slate, but that leaves room for some associate position. So again, Mr. Minis usually is the one who says this, but there are plenty of places to, plenty of seats in, in the town government that need people who are interested in helping out. Thank you. Mr. Tropiano, next.
Yep, an application from Sal Weiss Lehman LLC DBA Casa Cancun for a change of hours.
I don't see any of the applicants here. So.
Let's take a look and see what his change of hours are, just so.
Yep.
Talking about licensing authority.
It's on the license.
I'm looking at it right now, just to be sure.
Yep.
All right, let's see. The town of Wareham. Well, it really doesn't. I'm looking at the license and the change of hours, it's not on here. Let's see, why is that the case? It'd be sitting right here in black and white. Ah, here we go. All right, I found it. It says Monday through Sunday, six thirty AM to nine thirty PM. Closed Thanksgiving Day and Christmas Day. Those are the new, I'm assuming.
Yep, it's that, your motion, sir?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Titlebaum, you seconded it. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I did review the paperwork earlier, it seems to be in order. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? I will go for a roll call vote, please, Mr. Slaven.
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Minis?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you, five zero zero.
Hey, I move, up the donation from Shaw's, Give It Back Where It Counts program, the amount of eighteen dollars to the Wareham Free Library gift account.
Motion made and seconded, generous donation from Give It Back Where It Counts program. Any further discussion on the motion? I will go for a roll call vote, please, Mr. Slaven.
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Minis?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you very much.
Discussion and possible vote to apply CPC funds to remove and store Tremont Nail Factory signs. Who's in charge of that? Peter?
Oh, this wasn't a recommendation from the redevelopment authority?
Oh. Who's, who's idea, was this a?
It was.
The, the Community Preservation Committee has requested this, they're concerned about the signs and the bell tower. One of the signs has partially blown down from a storm, and the bell tower is in tough shape as well. So they've requested that we take this action. And this is just the removal. You, we're looking at the regular sign companies have told us no for taking them down. Looks like you need a bigger crane and things such as that. So altogether, I think our first quote was twelve thousand, but then they didn't have a prevailing wage in there, so you're probably looking closer to a sixteen to eighteen thousand dollar operation. We're expecting to get another quote, so. That's to take the signs down, and then we'd have to figure out a place to store them while the funds for fixing the signs, I guess, would be, would be, would be put together.
So this would be your request?
It's actually, this is your request, because the Tremont Nail is under the, is under, is really a selectman property, and then it's under the, the care of the redevelopment authority, but you are technically the owners, you as the board.
So I move we vote.
Well, I'll let you make the motion, but I know Mr. Titlebaum had a question. Go ahead, Mr. Tropiano.
Just going to make the motion, and then he can talk all he wants.
Go ahead.
I move that we apply for CPC funds to remove and store the Tremont Nail Factory signs.
Second for discussion?
Thank you. Motion made and seconded and for discussion. And I did send you earlier this evening the pictures of the sign and of the bell tower, which I hope you all were able to see before the meeting tonight. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, I understand that there's a desire to preserve these things. The flip side is, is we've just issued the second RFP that includes the potential for a long-term lease. We're looking to get this, if, if we get a responsive proposal, of course, we have to wait for that, but if we get one, if the plan is to go to Springtown Meeting and see if Town Meeting will authorize the lease and effectively give over control of this entire property to another firm, I don't know why we would want to spend this money at this time, it just doesn't make sense to me. I, I know we've got over three million dollars into this property, but I mean, the whole goal here is to, is to get it off of our plate and into somebody else's hands, and I just, I mean, I just don't support this. Secondly, and I mean, it's not that anybody had to, but this, you know, in terms of anybody coming to the redevelopment authority, that was never done. And again, nobody has to, it's a selectman property, but as far as our ability to recommend or not recommend, we don't have that because we didn't know about that this was actually going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
I think the problem is that the pieces of this stuff goes back into the eighteen hundreds, and unfortunately, the things are falling down on the roof. And, and it's actually going to become a safety issue because echoes across the street. You know, they have people parking alongside the building, et cetera. We're going to have to do something, whether we like it or not, because the, the last couple storms have done some severe damage, and things are hanging. We have a storm coming in a couple of days with sixty mile an hour winds. You know, I hate spending any more money on Tremont Nail because it hasn't, we haven't generated anything in these years now, but gonna have to at least have municipal maintenance take a look and make a decision if it's a safety issue. I understand Peter's thought, again, you know, we've just constantly done stuff with CPC money, and he's basically through Wareham Redevelopment Authority, they're supposed to develop it, which should take it off our hands and let someone else be responsible. I'm just not sure we have the timeframe to do this right now because of this mess. It's not as simple as just take the signs and preserve them. It's also a safety issue now.
Thank you. Mr. Minis?
I know that, well, I drive by there and through there yeah, once a week or whatever, check out the tide and the water where the canoe launches and. One of the signs is lying on the back roof, the other sign's lying forward. Is it under historical preservation? Or is it a safety issue? So. Are we going to reuse those signs? Are they going to be restored and put in the same place? Is that going to be a condition of the the lease agreement and could the potential lessee apply for community preservation funds do the same thing? And I know it's, I believe, Mr. Sullivan had, I, I ran into a couple of the municipal maintenance people there one day when they were doing some work down there, and that was the concern, and it was just too much for them to do. And so we do need to, and they were doing it as a safety concern. And so whether it's a proper use of CPC funds, I, I'm not sure. It depends on what is going to be done. I know they also discussed redoing the sign on the front of the office building with, with the, the sign that has the gold gilding and the lions head over the door, so that would be preservation. And if the other signs are going to be utilized on the building and the bell tower replaced and removed and redone, then it would be preservation. So that's all I got to say on it.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum, did you want to add something?
No, I mean, I, you know, I, I, if it is a safety issue, I guess, you know, that's one thing. I don't think you want to describe it that way too much when you're talking about CPC money, because then it becomes the question of, you know, you're talking about maintenance, you know, so that's yeah, I mean, I, I just think we should, you know, before we go and apply, I think we probably should talk with the, you know, the, the person that did submit the RFP the last time, and just say, this is an issue, you got any ideas for us? I mean, it's our responsibility not just to spend this money, but to try to safeguard it, and if we can spend other people's money instead, I'm, I'm all about that.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano, did I give you an opportunity to speak yet?
No, no, it's, it's fine, I, I made the motion.
Thank you. I know that there is a time constraint on this because of the the due dates for the CPC applications. And I know that there was some confusion probably over a period of maybe four or five months about getting this issue taken care of. I have driven by as well, same as Mr. Minis, and I'm not an engineer and I'm not a carpenter, but I certainly think it looks unsightly, if not, I, I don't want to use the word dangerous, but it certainly looks like something that, you know, could have ramifications. I know that the I, I'm pretty sure I speak that the CPC board itself was concerned about this and wanted to have this forwarded to us. I know that they had spoken, or at least members of them had spoken with Mr. Sullivan about getting a bid, because you know, it's not, it's not just a question of putting a ladder up, they're very, very heavy signs, and they're bolted beyond bolting. So I think it's, it's very important that it is taken care of. Mr. Slaven, do you have your hand up to speak again, sir? Yes, okay, go ahead.
Just so we understand Peter's statement about repairing this CPC under in the situation where it's a risk, et cetera, they can't fund that type of thing. This has to be done under historical preservation to do anything with these signs, or else we cannot use CPC money, it, it doesn't qualify that way. If we're going to do that also, I think the act was due on the first of March to get that done.
That's correct, and I believe they have a meeting on the twenty-third, but you're right, yeah, so.
Like my comments about the safety issue is because of the way I look at it, a different way because of the risk, but I can't sit there and have us go ahead and request CPC money on the idea that it's a, it's a, it's a risk from a safety point of view, because it doesn't qualify that.
I know that the, that, that the committee intends to restore them at a future time, but they can't restore them where they are.
I understand, I just want to make sure that we, we go, if we go ahead and do this, that we apply the proper way.
Right. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I'm sure, I think, I think I've got a solution to the conundrum.
Okay.
I think, let's let's vote to do this and put it on the town meeting warrant. And while we're going forward with the responses to the RFP, we can also ask if they'll take care of it during that time, because again, this won't be till the, till the, I'm assuming the special town meeting in April sometime, end, end of April. So none of this is an immediate resolution, but that way we can have two things going on concurrently. And if the new, you know, whoever's interested in Tremont Nail sites willing to take it over and, and fix that, great. If not, let's, let's move forward.
Okay, great, I think that's a good solution. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, the special town meeting warrant closes March twenty-eighth, so we've got, you know, you've got some time, and I would assume that you would want it on the special anyway to spend the money earlier, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion and a second to authorize the application. Is there any further discussion? Understanding that it is under historic preservation, that category. I'll go for a roll call vote, please, Mr. Slaven.
Yes.
Mr. Minis?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano, you're muted. Thank you, Mr. Titlebaum?
Blackton, yes.
Thank you, and myself, yes, five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, do you want me to sign the, or do you want the selectmen sign the application such for you as the chair? I, I just want to make sure it's not something that becomes a last-minute issue.
Move to authorize town administrator to execute the application.
Motion made to have Mr. Sullivan execute the signature on the application. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Minis?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Blackton Lee, yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you.
Next is the appointment. It's like the appointment of some shellfish constables.
Yep.
There are three of them, Roland G. Buckminster, Michael McGuire, and Eva Golden.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Did I hear a second? Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Manise, I know that you wanted to speak to this.
Right, um, I I'd like to do a friendly amendment to this motion, just to clarify it. And that would be to appoint Mr. um Roland Buckminster to the uh position of shellfish constable. Then Mr. Michael McGuire, Miss Eva Goldman, Miss Morgan Mattioli to the positions of deputy shellfish constables for the town of Wareham effective February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, for a term to expire no later than February sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, before I let you do that, can you explain why you would like to have that, the motion amended to that, sir?
Um, I believe we have one shellfish constable and the others are de- de- deputy constables that work um, under that individual and um as part of um Mr. Buckminster's job, he is a shellfish constable. We are just doing some paperwork and um to um fulfill a request by the Commonwealth Marine Resources and under um Mass General Law one thirty, section ninety-eight, uh, to appoint these people for a term of the three years as uh per general law.
Thank you. And I believe um that you discovered that the the requirements of the paperwork had changed recently, and that's why we're doing something a little bit differently than we had before.
Well, the um Marine uh, di- di- Division Marine um Resource sent us a um, a letter asking, you know, who's in these positions.
Right.
And they cited the, you know, Mass General Law and the section ninety-eight, um, they wanted the name. So we're we're basically just doing some um bookkeeping uh and reaffirming uh and and we'll we'll um make this, if we make the motion to appoint them, we'll fill out the paperwork and send it to them.
Okay, thank you.
If you ask Mr. Buckminster to come in and.
Um, one second. I'm gonna ask Mr. Titlebomb, do you have a question first, sir?
No, that's what I was gonna indicate. The the uh, DNR Director has his hand raised.
Okay.
Yeah, he's over in the participant in the attendees.
Would you let Mr. Buckminster into the meeting, please? Um, Mr. Slaven, I'm gonna ask whether you would withdraw your motion so that Mr. Manise's amended motion could be made?
Done.
And Mr. Tropiano, I believe you made the motion. Would you be willing to withdraw your motion so that Mr. Manise could make the motion?
Um, yeah, as soon as I hear what Mr. Buckminster has to say.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Good evening, Mr. Buckminster. How are you?
How are you? How's everything?
Thank you for joining us. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your service, Peter, on your announcement. The um, well, first off, I want to apologize. I, my email that got sent out, I scratched my head on after the fact, and it was more of a frustration with DMF because we do provide that information to them. And then all of a sudden, they don't have anything on us. So, but Mr. Manise is right, um, the the three have to be deputy shellfish constables under the, under chapter one thirty ninety-eight. And then there's one uh specific one. And in looking with all the other towns, all the other towns have gotten this letter too, and they're all sitting there going, what's going on? Because you have so many towns that do indefinite appointments. You have some towns that do six-year appointments. You have other towns that do the three-year appointments, and the state has just never done anything with any of this stuff. And we've we've provided them this information before, so. But definitely, those are the three. And and uh, just to back up, um, Officer Mattioli is going to the full-time police academy uh, starting next week. So she's gonna be tied up for six months. Once she's done and and we follow through with our appointments, um, then it, then she'll be, you know, she'll get that that backup appointment on the um uh, uh, shellfish constable or deputy shellfish constable as well. So I apologize for the email. I didn't mean to, never to disrespect any of you, and I'm sorry for the way it came out, because I looked at it after and I was like, that was, it was just running around, moving boats and then looking at the state thing. And so that was, no disrespect, I apologize to all of you for that.
No offense taken, I'm sure. Mr. Bowen, you have your hand raised.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chairman. It's it's fairly straightforward. The statute, chapter one thirty, section ninety-eight distinguishes between the shellfish constable and deputies. So that's a proper distinction. And it also provides for three-year terms. So what you're doing squares up with the law just fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussions?
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Tropiano?
Okay, so I will withdraw my motion, but as I understand it now, uh, Morgan is not gonna get appointed at this time, but will later on after they get out of the academy. Is that correct?
She can be appointed because it's it's.
Okay, all right, that's okay. I don't have a problem.
Absolutely, you can do that, but um, where she's gonna be tied up for so long, we're just, unfortunately, we're not gonna have her services for the next five, six months, so.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Hold on at once. It sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tropiano or Mr. Manise, would you, you want to repeat your motion because you did it so well the first time?
Need to pull it back up. I'm I'm jumping between tabs here.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. Um, I move to appoint Mr. Roland Buckminster um under MGL one thirty, section ninety-eight, to the position of shellfish constable for the town of Wareham effective February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, for a term to expire no later than February sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
First motion. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded for the first one. Any further discussion on that? I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Manise?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebomb?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Next.
I'm going to do the three under because it's one motion. I move to appoint Mr. Michael McGuire, Miss Eva Goldman, and Miss Morgan Mattioli um, under section MGL one thirty, under MGL one thirty, section ninety-eight, to the position of deputy shellfish constable for the town of Wareham effective February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, for a term to expire no later than February sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Manise?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebomb?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Manise, for researching that. And thank you very much, Mr. Buckminster, for joining us.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. And thank you for doing the uh ice rescue training. I.
Yeah, that was great. I've, yeah, nice partnership with the fire department. We.
Yeah, and it's it's very important to remind people, stay off the ice because we're having very strange weather. Thank you and good night, Mr. Buckminster.
Forty-eight hour business.
None.
I have no.
Okay, we will go to Mr. uh Sullivan's town administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Uh, we uh just wanted to alert you that the school department has officially vacated the Edeka School. So as the uh original turnover uh town meeting vote is now considered a town building. So um, I just want to let you know, there's, Mr. Menard obviously is concerned. None of us like like buildings and and uh to be vacant. So every day there's uh, and on the weekends as well, we have somebody going through the building to make sure that it's uh, everything's okay. So if there's a leak, anything like that happens, uh, as you know, it a vacant building, that's that's when when Murphy's Law strikes. So uh there was uh quite a few things left behind, but I think that was called for from the previous town meetings vote. So, but uh, might might require some cleanup efforts. We we are cleaning out anything that's uh not salvageable, if that makes sense. So so some things that maybe um shouldn't have been left behind. So that's uh, that's part of the status for that. And it's uh, I believe the Edeka's uh Steering Committee is is being made or has been made aware of that as well, so that they they know that. Uh, the other item is we've, we had forty-three confirmed cases of COVID. We did have three deaths, which I'm wondering if that's still um kind of a lag from from our our spike, if you will, because I don't, some of that can ta- can take a little while, but because that would be a pretty substantial for, if you're looking at uh forty-three cases, or I think last week was around, what, forty-seven or or something like that. Um, so just wanted to give you those numbers. And then I'm sort of gonna be in the same predicament as Mr. Manise, running through tabs real quick. We had the uh, uh, bond rating call with S and P. I am happy to announce that they did affirm our double A plus bond rating. So that's uh, you know, always a concern going into that. It's uh, you know, it was it was a, I'll send a copy to everybody and we can put it on the town webpage as well. Uh, they noted some of our our growing tax, uh, property tax base, which has been good. Uh, let me tell you something. When we we have the calls with them and for a moment, you you almost forget, you think you're just having general discussions. But they put everything they talk about in uh, in these reports. But the uh, but we've got a nice upside look. Uh, you know, they said the downside, although likely in the near term, we could lower the rating if the town draws on its fund balance without replenishing funds or if rising fixed costs associated with debt pension and OPEC costs lead to sustained budgetary imbalance. I think there's a big kudos for the uh, you know, for the leadership, including the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. One of the things they notify is strong notices, a strong financial management environment with well-embedded policies and practices, predictable budgetary performance due to stable revenues, expenditures, and financial current controls and uh low debt burden. So I appreciate everybody's hard work. It is uh these are these are really a snapshot into our, how we handle our finances. So I might get a little more giddy than than some others will on these, but it's uh, it's always nice to hear from from outside as well, that the things that we've been doing and uh really fighting hard to maintain are seem to be making a a deference and and uh really get uh noticed. So thank you all for your help in that.
I have to say that that's just spectacular, Mr. Sullivan, and you and your team have done an outstanding job um, to survive a couple of downturns in the market. Um, obviously, we are going into some periods of inflation, probably rampant inflation. Um, and it is clear that the financial uh tools that you and your teams are using have been very effective, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. We've we've got a great team and and that's every department. Uh, you know, obviously, great finance team, but every department pulls together to make sure this works. And a lot of uh, and the the residents on our boards and committees as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, sir?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Liaison initiative reports. How about Mr. Slaven?
Uh, before I start, I'd like to thank Mr. Sullivan for basically generating a couple of quarterly reports all into one on the financials. It gives the board members a good idea of where we stand as far as budget versus actual expenditure. And it's a, it's a really good tool to be able to use and see. Again, I thank Derek very much for it, especially with the amount of work going on to get all the other reports generated in time. Uh, the only thing that I really have that would be of interest is the Buzzes Bay uh bathhouse. The, they had a meeting, I think it was Friday, uh, they introduced the new uh general manager, whatever you want to call it, who's gonna run the program. I believe the man is from England originally. Uh, he's got a lot of very interesting uh programs, a major advance in the, in the depth of the programs as well. I would suggest that maybe we reach out to the coalition and ask the gentleman, I think it's Stewart, it's his first name, to come in and talk to us and maybe inform the public of what's really happening because of the, their expansion is a couple sailboats they've added from one volt to twelve passenger. Uh, there's just all kinds of programs. There'll be a powerboat program, it looks like. So I think it's really important that we get the information out to the public. That's all I really have for today.
I'll, I'll invite them to a, for a me- meeting.
Sorry, Derek, I didn't hear you.
It's not Wareham, England. That's not where he's from, right?
No, he would be from Waram, England.
Yes. He's probably from Scotland or London, one or the other.
Now, that's just, no. Mr. Manise, do you have any liaison reports, sir?
Um. No, nothing of importance. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, Mr. Tropiano?
Uh, I have no liaison report.
And Mr. Titlebomb?
Oh, I'm good, thanks.
I am as well. Thank you.
And by the way, Madam, Madam Chairperson, there's a uh, and I need to do a little bit of thinking on on what to to say for Mr. Titlebomb. Uh, I know he, all the employees and myself have certainly enjoyed his his support and uh sometimes his uh, the lash he's offered to get, to make sure things get done. So it's uh really have enjoyed it. That I'm happy to to hear that there's uh, there's so- something beyond the uh, the rainbow of over here, so.
There is. Uh, and you realize that uh, you're getting closer to whatever's beyond the rainbow when you get to a certain age. I'd liken my age not to just being on the back nine, but maybe being on Amen Corner to to use a golf analogy since golf is all the talk these days. So for those who don't know, at the Masters Tournament, the holes thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are known as Amen Corner because more people blow leads and do, you know, hit trees and do crazy stuff there than anywhere else on the course. So when when you look at life as an eighteen-hole golf course and you're on Amen Corner, you gotta start thinking about how the rest of it's not about. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have nothing further. So the uh minutes, Mr. Tropiano?
Move approval of the regular scheduled meeting of January eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Any further discussion? I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Manise?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebomb?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Next, I move the approval of the following executive session minutes, May fourth, twenty nineteen.
May fourteenth.
Uh-huh?
May fourteenth.
Sorry. May fourteen, twenty nineteen, July thirtieth, twenty nineteen, and September tenth, twenty nineteen, and hold.
Thank you. Motion made to approve and hold. Is there any further discussion? I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Manise?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And Mr. Titlebomb?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much. Is there anything else to come before this astute body? No?
I would ask Mr. Titlebomb to do what I usually do.
Yeah, okay. Uh, motion adjourned. Second. The honor.
Motion made and seconded. It's not debatable. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Manise?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Miss, myself? And yes, and Mr. Titlebomb?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a ne- uh, safe evening.
Night on.
Let everybody be safe.